I call to order this regular meeting of the Keansburg Board of Education on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. The regular meeting of the Keansburg Board of Education will be held in the Bolger Middle School Auditorium. Adequate notice for this meeting has been mailed to the Asbury Park Press via with the Municipal Clerk of Keansburg, posted on the district website and posted inside the office of the Keansburg Board of Education, 100 Palmer Place, Keansburg, New Jersey, on January 4th, 2022. This time I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frisell?
Here.
Ms. Callahan-Moran?
Here.
Mr. May Caskin?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Siciliano?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
President, it's hard revealing.
Ms. Ferraro?
Here.
This time please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. This time we'll do the reports from our student representatives. From the eighth grade, we have Mr. Brenna.
So right now, we have a lot of things that are currently happening at Joseph R. Bolger Middle School. To start off, the eighth grade had so much fun on the trip to medieval times on May 10th. Unfortunately, the White Knight could not win. The eighth graders are looking forward to their next class trip on June 2nd to Oak Tree Lodge. Two days after that, on Saturday, June 4th, they will be attending the Butterfield Dance, and is always a memorable event for the eighth graders. Bolger Band has its day of final spring concert performance with Miss Grimaldi and also the art show for grades six, seven, and eight on May 4th. There was an induction ceremony for the band triumvirate members on May 11th. The Bolger Band will be competing at Dorney Park on May 27th. The Bolger Band submitted a video of them playing the Rutgers Fight song, "The Bells Must Ring," to have the chance to play this fall at their home game with the Rutgers Marching Scarlet Knights. Go Knights! This week is the NJSLA testing at Bolger for language arts and math. Next week will be the science test. Students accepted into the Monmouth County Vocational Schools for next year took their placement test today. The eighth grade and early poetry slam will be held in the media center on May 25th. And here's the update on our spring sports at Bolger. Right now, both teams have two games left, and both teams, the baseball and softball team, hold a record of five and two. They are looking forward to being eligible for playoffs starting Monday. Miss Lopez's Spanish club meets weekly to learn about Spanish culture in other countries, and sometimes the students cook Spanish dishes to enjoy at the meetings.
Thank you. Representing the high school, we have Billy Brown.
Good evening. My name is Billy Brown, and I'm a senior at Keansburg. The Keansburg High School prom is next Thursday, May 26th. Seniors will be celebrating their graduation accomplishments next month with a senior barbecue, a senior trip, yearbook signings, the arrival live tour, and graduation set for June 24th. In June, we'll be celebrating and congratulating our seniors at both academic and athletic scholarship ceremonies. This year, seniors are being awarded nearly $65,000. The girls softball team had their yearly season success paid off with divisional championship, respectable appearances in the Shore Conference Tournament, and state playoff. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can ask the two of you, one of the things that we're being asked tonight is to approve the food services. Can you tell us a little bit about what you think about the food services this time?
I think from the beginning of the year to the end, it's gotten so much better. I don't know what changed, but whatever it is, keep it going because it's gotten much better. Honestly, I'm not gonna lie. I'm not gonna be honest.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Just one thing before I move on. The agendas are in the back of the room. If anybody in the audience has not gotten one, it's on the cart at the back. We're going to discuss agenda items, so I want you to be prepared. For those people at home, the agenda is posted on the website, so you are able to get to the website, open the agenda, and view it before or while you're watching the video. At this time, do we have any committee reports?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. The financial meeting was held yesterday, May 16th, at 3:45. Myself, Mr. Kitchen, and Mr. Setti sat together. We went over the bills list. There was nothing really to report. We went over some new grants that were being possibly approved today, and they were all financially sound. Thank you. Anyone else?
At this time, we're going to move forward to comments and questions relating to board agenda items, but before we do, I would like to address public participation at a board meeting. This is regulated by Policy 0167. The policy requires that you must state your name, municipality of residence, and your affiliation. You must direct your statements to the presiding officer. In this case, it's me or the vice president, Mr. Cook, when I'm not here. The presiding officer may interrupt when a statement is too lengthy, when abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Then we request that a person leave when they do not observe reasonable decorum, and they may postpone the meeting at any time. The last meeting that we had, there were moments that were unacceptable, and watching the YouTube video back repeatedly, I could hear and see things that I cannot see from this seat. Threats against teachers, staff, board members, and members of the public is unacceptable and will not be tolerated. This includes overt threats, threatening gestures, and alluding to fighting in the parking lot. Members of the public should not interrupt others, this includes anyone, should not engage with others. All statements must be made to the board, the presiding officer, and I reserve the rights to enforce our policies, including removing people from the meeting and future school events. I want everyone to feel safe, to be able to come to this meeting and to speak freely. I tried to make the last meeting as best I could so that everybody could come and say what they had to say, to the fullest that they could. All right? I want people to be able to come here when they have issues and concerns. Thank you. With that, I'll open the floor to the public for agenda items only. Please remember to state your name and your residency. Seeing no members coming forward, I'll close that portion of the meeting. At this point, we have an executive session.
Be it resolved that in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Keansburg Board of Education shall conduct a closed executive session pursuant to the personnel and legal exceptions prescribed in NJSA 10:4-12 for the purposes of discussing legal. It is anticipated that the length of this executive session will be 30 minutes, and an action will be taken in public after the executive session. Be it further resolved that the minutes of the executive session will be released when the need for confidentiality in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12 no longer exists. Or apply, sorry.
Can I just clarify? We're not taking any action after this meeting, right?
There'll be no action that's gonna be taken.
Okay, so no action will be taken. Do I have a motion?
No motion. Is that a party?
Yeah, a party motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're back on. At this time, I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion.
That was Judy. Greg. Judy. Judy got it first.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? At this time, I accept the motion for the approval of minutes. We have the emergency special meeting of April 14, 2022, and the regular meeting of April 26, 2022.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call Ms. Frisell.
Yes, but no to the emergency.
No to the emergency? Ms. Callahan Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Minkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes to the special meeting, no to the general meeting. There's a wait.
Can I, just to clarify, because Ms. Frisell, I know she did the same thing. Are you voting no that you don't approve of the minutes, or are you abstaining from the minutes?
Abstaining.
That is correct.
So they're both abstaining.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Remember, no? Mr. Minkowski?
Well, yes again. I don't think I did.
Superintendent of schools recommends positive action on the following items. Under personnel, one, retirement; two, nonprofessional employment; three, dean of culture and climate; four, resignation from position; five, reemployment of professional and nonprofessional personnel; six, reemployment of personnel administrators; seven, guide salary correction; eight, leave of absence medical revision; nine, leave of absence maternity childcare; ten, substitute teachers paraprofessionals for the district; eleven, student-teacher district; twelve, rea- paraprofessionals for the district, 11, student teacher district, 12, reapproval of substitute athletic trainers, 13, 21-22 home instruction, 14, fall coaching position, 15, St. John's Fields, Collins Fields, Home Del Park, 16, fall coaching positions, 17, volunteer to film football games, and that's it under personnel.
Motion?
Motion.
There any questions, comments, or discussion on any of the items? Yeah. I'm gonna take a local vote. Mrs. Frisell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mankowski? Yeah, Ha?
Yes, but everything, uh, excuse me, um, number five, 14 named down, thank you.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes, but, uh, number five, fourth and fifth named down, and number 16, first name.
Sorry, which number?
Number 16 first.
Five is the fourth and fifth, 16, one.
Thank you.
I have a question really quick. Number five, reemployment, we have the first name. We're approving reemployment of somebody, but they're also resigning.
From summer position. Policy and regulation, these are both a second reading. They were approved last month, so this is in for second reading.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion on these items? And we'll take a local vote. Mrs. Frisell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliana?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes.
Under general, 18, professional orthopedic, 19, 22-23 fall high school schedule and transportation, 20, school bus evacuation drills.
Accept the motion?
A motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding these matters? I just have one quick question. In regards to the schedules and the transportation, do we have to still abide by the COVID regulations for that?
So there isn't any current ones?
Okay.
For us, but if they were, come back up, yes.
We would have to then reapprove it. Okay, just wanted to be clear now.
Yeah.
Uh, for number 19, under girls tennis, it says August 3, 18. Uh, what's the actual date, just so we're clear?
It's August 3rd.
August 3rd, okay, I wasn't sure it was gonna be 18th, 3rd.
Yeah, I don't know where that.
3rd, okay.
Any other questions? Accept a local vote? Mrs. Frisell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliana?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes.
Then we have addendum items. A1, resignation, A2, summer program site coordinator district, A3, in-state class trips. A4, I just want to explain, both of the portions of this were already approved. Both the actual budget numbers and the travel and related expense reimbursement were previously approved, we just have to approve it together under one item. That's why it's back under there, nothing has changed in it. We just have to submit approval of it under one item, so that's why it's back on there. And A5, 22-23 renewal of food service management company.
Motion?
I'll motion.
Second? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Just one quick question, just with regard to the travel reimbursement. That's required by law that we reimburse our teachers. So that's not an optional thing that we can decide that they're not there, and I'm sure the KEA wouldn't appreciate it if we didn't pay them, right?
It's also administrative, yes.
Administrator's, okay, thank you.
So our resignation, number one, is that, you said, is this summer?
Oh, this resignation, I thought you meant the one on the other page.
No, because we're approving it under, that's what I asked you, we're approving it under.
So ours, no, that had come out first, it'll just be pulled off. He, he, he resigned after our initial package went out.
So we're holding that from the original agenda?
You can, it doesn't, I mean, he won't, the resignation negates that. That's why we're approving each other.
Okay, when you said summer, I'm like, it doesn't say.
I thought you meant the other one.
No. Yeah, no.
Want to take a vote? Mrs. Frisell?
Yes.
Ms. Callahan Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliana?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Uh, Mr. President, on the addendum, I'm under A4, uh, before I, my vote is that I thank everyone for putting their hard work in, the sweat equity in to adopting the budget, but I don't believe in S2, I think it's disgusting, and I think it sets us back and hurts our students, so I'm gonna have to vote no, and yes to everything else, thank you.
Actually, A3, is 2021 to 2022, suing is supposed to be 2022 to 2023?
No.
No?
So it is for now.
Okay.
It, they're, the, um.
I was just looking for the.
We received grant money, um, so there's people going on class trips to places that we have.
We have new trips planned, okay.
Yes, it is for this year, it's for.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's for this year.
Sorry for the question.
Okay. Yes. Ms. Ferrara?
Yes.
That was my fault, I.
School business administrator board secretary's report. One, receipt and acceptance of January board secretary's report. Two, approve appropriation transfers. Three, approve bills. Four, approve payrolls. Five, 2021-2022 May district hip report. Six, 2021-2022 retro tuition. Seven, 21-22 added district tuition, none. Eight, health insurance console, uh, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, preschool and charter school security compliance grant. Ten, Alyssa's Law Security Grant Funding. Eleven, 2022-2023 New Jersey Schools Insurance Group Safety Grant. Twelve, Safe Schools Integrated Pest Management. Thirteen, uh, Harp-Esser Grant Amendment. Fourteen, CRRSA Esser 2 Grant Amendment. Fifteen, Perkins Secondary Grant Amendment. Sixteen, ESEA Grant Amendment. Seventeen, IDEA Basic Grant Amendment. Eighteen, Perkins Secondary Consolidated Grant. Nineteen, approval, approval of dental rates for the 2022-2023 school year. Twenty, approval of vision rates for the 2022-2023 school year.
Undertain a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
I'll second, Trey.
Judy or Craig? Judy was first. Judy, you got it. Are there any questions, comments, or any concerns regarding these matters?
I have a question. Number seven, uh, don't we usually always have added district tuition, are we paid up? Is it like, you know, with none listed, is it required by law that we list that we're not paying any?
We don't have to pay any this month.
That's what I was asking, are we just paid up for this month?
Yes, yeah, there's nothing outstanding right now.
Okay, so, that was it.
Mr. Ha?
Mr. President, on number 10, did we get this grant once before, is this the same grant that we spoke about that's gonna fix some doors and some cameras?
Can I speak to Alyssa's Law Grant?
Yeah, that's, yeah, this is a law that we put in the lockout system, we're accepting, I believe, under, we're accepting the actual funding.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, just one, uh, mention about the grants is that during the financial meeting, we did discuss about possibilities of, uh, what we're going to do with this grant money, and let's just be honest, it's great that we're getting these funds available to us, but one thing was improving the phone lines, um, for better security, and the other thing is the amendment says something new that we're going to be doing, uh, more common practice, correct? There's nothing necessarily wrong with them, we're just making adjustments so that we can accept those, correct?
It could be tiny things, like if, when the negotiations happened and there's a salary change, we have to amend the grant.
Okay.
And it's now more than ever, because when they're federal grants, they're just a lot more paperwork involved.
Okay.
And, uh, for the Alyssa's Law Grant, I know we had the security presentation, you know, our head, head of security had made suggestions that we're gonna, you know, include him in trying to.
So we actually have a webinar next Monday to apply for another grant to help cover some of those costs too, but this other, the school, um, any of the safety grants, we can use portions of that for, but the one that we're doing next Monday is with the town, um, I believe, like, the, the police chief, captain, um, representatives from Beryl Hall, and it's like a joint thing, and that would be for that kind of stuff too.
Okay.
And we don't know if we have it yet, but.
I just know he had a lot of suggestions that sounded like good, and what we needed.
We've been very lucky with getting our grants, they're.
Mr. Ha at that meeting was supposed to draw up a list and give it, has he ever done that?
Yeah, he has.
And he, he'll admit that when I'm to, um, the director of, uh, tech knowledge, he did, uh, process the whole, so, it, it's no more, so now, where are we gonna place it and walk right in?
So that's when you see a lot of these amendments too, so then something like that, like the camera system came up, so we can pay for that with CARES, which was one of our first grants that came up, which has to be spent down by September, from somewhere else we had budgeted for, and pay for it at CARES, so then you'll see like an amendment.
Any other questions? Want to take a vote? Mrs. Frisell? Mrs. Frisell? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Ms. Callahan Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mankowski?
Uh, yes, however, I abstained, uh, number eight, number 19, and number 20.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliana?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Ferrara?
Yes.
This time I'll open the meeting up to the public. If any member of the public might be heard, just again, step forward, just state your name and your residency.
Yeah, me, I want to apologize, please, uh, I just wanna, you know, thank you for, um, you know, your thing in the, in the beginning about the public and stuff, that's appreciated. Um, I also wanted to, um, just say that you weren't the only one to, you know, watch it back, um, Aiden also did get to see, you know, a lot of what went on, and, um, you know, it, it kinda went both ways, is what I'm trying to say, and, um, he also did hear, um, I guess, a word number, because I wasn't here, um, go to the, up to this side of the room and just say, somebody said, we hear you, which is really, you know, that's not why I had, you know, I came to the board for that, so I just wanted to make sure that it goes both ways, like, you noticed everything about the video when you watched it? So, that's about that. Um, my other thing is, how long, um, like, to reply for email, like, I have questions, um, I send emails, I'm still waiting on answers, and, so, I really, like, need that address, um, so I just need to know, you know, if somebody wants to message me, or let me know how long.
It would depend on the circumstance, so there's times when there's lawyers involved, and things like that, so then we have to wait for a reply from the attorney.
Okay.
Prior to replying, so it would be like, you could call, it, it would be specific to what a circumstance would be.
Okay, okay. And, um, added district wise, when, um, you're waiting for a teacher, or whatever, added district, how long is that allowed to go out?
So unfortunately, there's no staffing, it's, it's been quite a week, so what happens is the time adds up, like, you never lose the time, but it takes some time to.
Okay, yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
And his days aren't gonna be counted as absent?
It would be based on the medical.
Oh.
Yeah.
Because that was not a question.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Jessica Mankowski, Keatsburg, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Keatsburg Education Association. Uh, we have partnered with the Keatsburg High School School Day Student Services Program and Father Time to organize a community health fair this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Hello Beach alongside the Father Time Fishing Derby. We'll have over 20 organizations and vendors that work towards health and safety in our community, um, and this includes physical health, mental health, there will be healthy food tastings from local restaurants, some of our Titan athletes will be there, and it should be a really good time, so if you're gonna be around this Saturday, we hope that you'll stop by.
It's supposed to be beautiful weather on Saturday, yeah. Hopefully it doesn't get too hot until later.
Here's a flyer, we're banking, I'll be back.
Anyone else?
Uh, I'm here on the 2nd Avenue, um, first thing I wanted to know, um, that A5, I don't know if it's still available, but, on the food service, was there any, um, renegotiation or anything like that, regarding, um, or fundraisers or things like that?
So that's not food services, that comes from federal. Like, you mean like what we can do within school?
Yeah.
That comes from federal code, that's not about the food service company?
And, and, I feel like we're still, um, maybe reaching out to personal events and talk.
It's the laws from the Obama administration.
Yeah, it came from Obama.
It's the laws from the Obama administration that makes it where certain foods aren't allowed to be sold in schools.
No, 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 yeah, I know, but then there was like, I think there's just like a miscommunication because there were things sold, and then, you know, some things are sold and some things aren't, so we're just gonna try to, just for fundraising for next year, because it's been so difficult this year.
One thing that you had told me you couldn't do that you definitely can, and I, I did double check on it, is provide order forms to have things then delivered outside of school hours, you can absolutely do that, I know, like, the one thing you said, like, was the Philly pretzel thing, and you were told, like.
No.
You can do that.
Okay, all right, so it was a reach out to, I know that's this, that's why.
Yeah, no, that's different.
Misunderstanding, um, that was the first thing. Um, the second thing was, I wanted to say, publicly for, um, on behalf of, like, a lot of the students and, um, sports teams that we were really sad about Mitch's resignation, um, really, it, it like crushed, um, he's had so many of the kids sporting events, and you don't see a lot of staff. There, there is a handful that do come, and we absolutely appreciate it, he comes to so many things, even, you know, things that are, you know, far away, it's not just, he comes to home things, so that presence is really gonna be missed, and really, like, I feel like missed for the kids, so I wanted to say that publicly, maybe he's watching, you know, or maybe somebody will relay that message to him, because it really, it, it makes such a difference to the kids, and he waits for them to walk off, like, today was such a big deal, and he greeted every player, and he greeted the, the other team as well, and that, it's, it's really nice to have that. And a thank you to our tennis coach and Mr. Ha, we've had a lot of rain this year, and they, like, really went above and beyond to make sure that all the players get the information, you know, and things are organized, and it, it's really nice that, um, a lot of the troubles that we had during the year, um, to come to, you know, spring sports and have so much rain, things canceled and rescheduled, they have, they, just really nice for the kids and for the parents to be able to come to meet at some things and to do that, and, you know, I feel like, you know, coming up here and, you know, saying things or whatever, it's nice to say things and let them know that we appreciate them, and they've just done an outstanding job of, you know, making things great, you know, like, easier and, you know, for parents and kids. And Mr., this, Mr. Ha, thank you for your, uh, it's nice to see, answer question, instead of sitting here in the audience all the time, and just always hearing everybody just saying yes, 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 so thank you for letting know on yes too. Um, I'm watching things, it really is nice to see when someone questions and doesn't just automatically everybody agree, so that was really nice, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? This time I'll open it up to members of the board.
Hi, um, so I have a couple things, um, I just want to say really nice job to the high school bands, I was at the spring concert, and the band sounded really tight, um, the jazz section was awesome, they killed it, so great job, um, I always love coming back and, and hearing the bands, it's one of my favorite things. And also, uh, so, our student representatives. And also, uh, so our student representatives brought up that the eighth grade is going to Oak Tree Lodge. Brings back memories of me being in the eighth grade. That was one of my funnest times. But I will just say to everyone going, make sure you're hydrated, because I had an incident at Oak Tree Lodge, and I got taken away in an ambulance because I wasn't hydrated. So please make sure you're hydrated and be safe and have fun.
You still said it was fun, though, so that's great.
It was fun. It was fun for the 45 minutes I was there. But, um, don't stay up for the, you know, for the previous night and play video games all night and drink Monster Energy Drinks with your friends and drink no water before you jump into the pool. Don't do that. Take it from me. And it's really, really sad to see, um, that Ms. Frisell's retiring. Her art classes were super fun for me. I still have some stuff that me and my sister made in her art classes to this day in my apartment. It's very, very sad, but I wish her the best. I wish all of our retirements the best. And I am looking forward to the end of the school year. Thanks.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Uh, Mr. President, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. It was something bigger in my life. I got to help some veterans. Number one on my list, Border Bed is number two. I'm sorry, not by much, but again, I had a chance to help some wounded warriors. Uh, good luck to the teachers who are retiring. I still say no to Mr. Stark because, um, as the grasshoppers learn from their mentor, I still have a lot to learn, so I don't want him to go. But he's gonna go, and wish him luck. Uh, we have some good news. One of our former students just graduated from the Stock Room with a doctorate in physical therapy this past weekend. So that's awesome. Now we always hear things, sometimes at meetings or sometimes during the week, there's always stuff that's happening, but we don't recognize the good stuff when it happens. And when I got the text to watch her graduate, it was amazing. But again, Kiffin Keensburg, because I was a doctor in physical therapy. So, um, again, spring is here part-time, and the sports program is adapted to it. So, and we're making the best of it. The Lady Titans didn't win today moving forward into playoffs. And again, someone spoke about, I don't know when their next game is, but it's already...
It's Thursday.
Outstanding. We do have a big weekend in Keensburg coming up. We have the Father Time, piggybacking with the help and the big services down there. We also have the Food Truck Festival that's gonna go on. And then on Sunday would be, excuse me, Memorial Day Parade, where the Border Bed and the KEA, who's always... Excuse me. Um, have, uh, have, uh, been invited to march by the parade committee. I will be walking with the Wounded Warriors, but I see you down there. I'll be with you. But again, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Frisell?
I just want to wish our retired president luck and Mr. Mitchell, huge loss to us, I think, for anything to go.
Mrs. Frisell?
And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Reed on Dean of Culture and Climate. Good luck. And, uh, the high school is definitely going to Mr. Mitchell. He was a big block.
Yeah, congratulations, Mr. Reed. Congratulations to those retiring. Thank you to the public for coming and speaking on both positive and negative things. We like to hear both sides because it's important to us, our decision-making. Good. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Reed, congratulations, and also congratulations with the football team. I hope to see good things on the field. Um, also, congratulations to the retirees. I hope they find their time very happy and enjoyable. And to Mr. Mitchell, it is sad to see you leave, but, uh, you will be very much missed. There are some great things happening in the community, but, uh, I also have to say there are great things happening here. Those grants are gonna go a long way for those students and for the rest of everybody here in the town. So, thank you.
I have one question. I just want to congratulate Michael Flynn. He, um, he's going to the Army ROTC. I don't know the exact word, but the Army is ROTC.
I'm gonna have to hit that article up on our...
It's like the space program.
Space program, yep.
It's very, very...
Nationwide, like nationwide. So congratulations to him. Well represented.
Also, again, congratulations to Mr. Hoff. I think it was eight to five win with two home runs. So they're gonna be playing on Thursday. It'd be great to see state final... No, it's not state finals, right? It's, uh, semifinals, playoffs. Yep. Thank you.
For me, just again, I want to congratulate Mr. Reed on your new position as well as being head football coach. Look forward to a lot of wins. All right, so start doing your homework. I was remiss at the last meeting. We didn't mention the Titan 5K, but I do want to thank everybody. That's a tremendous amount of work. Goes to Wounded Warriors and veterans. But Mr. Stark, all the staff, the students, the borough, the public works people, both the Keensburg as well as the Middletown Police Department. We really shut down a couple of miles of road in this town, and we spent a morning running for warriors. So I do appreciate all the work that it takes to do that. I understand it may possibly have been the last one. I'm hoping that we may hear something different. I saw a final on one of those things, so I'm hoping it's not.
Big news.
Yep. Um, the PTA is doing the Queens and Princess, uh, sorry, the Queens and Princes Dance, um, this Friday. So that will be at Crusoe. Um, again, we have a big week and a weekend in Keensburg this Saturday with the fishing derby, the health fair, and the food truck festival, as well as the Memorial Day Parade. Um, and then just final, one final thing about the public participation. I do want this to be a safe place that people can come to. I do want members of the public to be able to come here, tell us when they have grievances, be able to tell the board what's happening, both the positive and the negative. We need to hear both of those things. Um, again, we have the student representatives here so that we can get a voice from the students. I want to make sure that this is inclusive. That's quite frankly why I asked them about the food services, because they're the ones that know. I can't tell you if it tastes good or not. They can. So at least if they get food, uh, if they get lunch, all right?
Even if they don't eat lunch?
Yep, even if they don't eat lunch. They can tell us if they're friends eating lunch or not. That's all I have.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Mankowski. Before we adjourn. I love the video, the YouTube video and stuff. I was just wondering if we could still, just put it out there, still videotape the meetings, but take it off YouTube just so we can have more parent participation at the meetings? I feel like everything is all over social media, and nobody comes to the meeting. Yeah, and all, there's a couple hundred people on the YouTube channel that view everything. And I'd rather than be here and tell us personally what's going on, what we need to know. Still, tape each meeting, but hopefully have more parent participation at the meetings.
I would definitely love to see more people come to the meeting. Stuff we could certainly discuss, you know, what we should do with that.
At this point, I'll take, unless anybody has anything else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
You have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.